Okay, good evening. Welcome to the April Board of Education meeting. I'm Rick Mason, President of the Board, and our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to Lake Mills leader and posted at the library, the post office, and the bank of Lake Mills on April 2nd. We have one change that I'm going to talk with you about, and that updated agenda went up on Tuesday, April 3rd.
Can we stand to the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm going to do a little of recognition here. I'd like to have Dr. Thomas come up. Dr. Thomas has completed 15 years, and that's five terms on the Board of Education, and we appreciate that a great deal. And we have a plaque for her tonight, and it says, "Given in gratitude for the 15 years of dedicated service to the Lake Mills Area School District. Donna Thomas, Board Member, April 2003 through April 2018." So congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you get this? Do you want to say anything?
No.
All right. All right. All right, I'm going to call the meeting in order. Could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert DiImperio?
Donna Thomas?
Hi.
Richard Mason?
Here. Any agenda revisions or...
Since we submitted the agendas of the paper, we've secured a candidate for the high school math department, and so we'd like to add item number one, or I, excuse me, approval of professional staff contract for 2018-19.
So could we have approval with the revisions?
I move the board approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Jen is approved. Any community input?
I'm not aware of any.
All right. Mr. Blaze?
Even though the weather doesn't exemplify it, it is April, and Lake Mills High School has just began its fourth quarter for the year. Softball is 2-0 and is off to a great start. For track, the boys and girls team both play six in their last meet out of over 20 teams, so they are off to a fast start as well. Solo and ensemble stage is coming up in just a couple weeks, so all the performers representing Lake Mills have been working hard to refine their pieces so we can have a strong showing come April 28th. Senior exit interviews are April 20th, so all the seniors turned in their portfolios and are hopefully ready to go. Interact Club recently held a fundraiser for the Ronald McDonald House collecting pop tabs. They surpassed their goal and collected over 10 gallons of pop tabs. Overall, the students at Lake Mills High School are heading into a busy fourth quarter and are ready to finish the year strong. Thank you.
Thanks, Blaise. Mr. DiImperio is attending a conference in his place. Can I give a brief report about the facilities? We've been meeting pretty regularly, and we've now completed two community master planning focus groups, including a Facebook live presentation. The feedback is being tabulated and analyzed, and these conversations and feedback sheets will be used to create a district-wide survey. And the final master planning focus forum, the final master planning focus forum-
Just one to me.
-will be held on May 2nd at 7:00 in the high school auditorium. And finally, our committee has also met with our, what we call, facilities core team to continue planning our presentations and respond to the questions and comments from the focus groups. So any questions on those? All right. Administrator reports, Mrs. Savrude.
Good evening. My work right now has been primarily focusing on all of the students taking the forward exam, so we are well underway with that. And then the ACT Aspire 9th and 10th graders take that next week, so the high school's on a special schedule for that. And I'm going to invite Tara Williams, who is our ELL coordinator, up to present our ELL program plan.
Good evening. Could you please open up the PDF document that I gave to you? And I want to highlight some pieces of that. I'm going to start with the appendix, actually. Going to go a little bit backwards. Could you go to page 17, please? So page 17 talks about our ELL population. We currently have 54 students in our population for the ELL, the English Language Learners, and that does not include the 12 monitored ELLs. So we have a total of 66 students. That equals approximately 4.35 percent of our student population. So in my opinion, it's almost 4.5 percent of our population. Quite a bit of our kids are part of this population. If you go to the next part of that, page 18, am I going too quickly? Do you see where this is?
Let me hang those out to 14.
So page 18 talks a little bit about our test scores. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that. There's four different graphs on page 18 and 19, and it shows the comparison between the English proficiency students, so that's the regular ed kids, and on the left part of that, the state compared to the ELL population. So as you can see, for every one of those graphs, the ELL population is always lower. Okay? And we are doing better for our ELL population most of the time, but we're still anywhere between 20 to 30 points below the regular ed population. So I would like to see that changed. Do you see those graphs and how that changes? We talk about the ELL, the English Language Arts, the math, science, and social studies. All of those have a significant gap between the general ed population and the ELL population. So that's the problem that I see every day when I work with these students. And we have a lot of them. Like I said, almost 4.5 percent are part of our ELL program. So I want to briefly outline this document that I've been working on. It's 20 pages long, so I told I had two minutes, and I probably have already used a minute and a half. So I'll try to go through this quickly. So the first part just basically talks about our reality and the recommendations that I have. So that's executive summary. At some point, you can look through some of this, okay? If you looked on page three, it talks about what's going well. We have a lot of great things going on, including we have a bilingual para that translates most of our documents. We've got a Spanish language line. We have both Pam Moan in the elementary school and me in the middle and high school working with these students, okay? But keep in mind, that's between the two of us, that's one position for almost 66 students within three different buildings. So there's a lot of ideas that I have to improve things. So going through this, on page four, you'll see my staffing recommendations. Keep in mind, they're my staffing recommendations. I recognize what I would suggest would be good for the program. On page five, if you want to keep going through this, just so you can see what's in this document, I've got the goals for our ELL program. And the next page, the legal foundation, page six. So there's several different cases that have gone all the way to the Supreme Court of why all public schools have an ELL program if we have ELL students. Okay, so that has six or seven different Supreme Court cases that went all the way to the top. Okay, page seven, general considerations. I want to highlight the last one on this page, the one in bold. It says, "It may take a long time for a student to learn English well enough to participate fully in an all-English language mainstream classroom." So what's that's, research says it takes a student approximately five to seven years in an ELL program before they're exited to feel comfortable and on par with their peers. Okay, that's a long time. Because if you, I think a lot of people see some ELL students saying, well, they're fluent, right? That's conversational English. It's not academic English, and it gets harder as they go up in middle and high school. So carrying on, we have our current program on page eight. Okay, what that is, divided out by schools. And then from nine through 14, which you want to just scroll through, that talks about our program as it is right now. So it talks about our entry procedures, the testing that we do with access testing, our exiting procedures, our reclassification. That talks about what I do and Pam Moan does every day. So any questions so far on that? Because I have some recommendations. Okay? So one thing I see for future growth of the program, I'd like to train and build staff capacity. Okay, this would include CISA II trainings, which there are many, summer workshops, professional development here in the district. I'd like to better utilize our teachers who already have an ELL certification or minor, which are many as well. I'd like to provide additional support for our ELL students in the classroom. So this includes hiring additional trained ELL staff to provide targeted interventions, cluster the ELL students with teachers who have been ELL-trained, and provide additional para support for courses with difficult academic language. So courses up at the high school level like biology, social studies, those history classes that students need the additional academic language support. And then finally, I'd like to take your attention to the very last page of the document at the appendix. So I think that might be page 20? I'm not sure.
21.
21? Okay. That's where I would like to see our ELL program go. And so it talks, talks about what we are going to have next year through the 2018 through 19 school year, the numbers on the left-hand side in each one of the buildings, and where I'd like to see each program be in each one of these buildings. So, "In an ongoing effort in preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities, given that almost 4.5 percent of our students do not yet have the English skills to succeed without support, my goal is to get all of these students ready for their future opportunities." And that's my report.
Somebody want? Thank you.
This is really good. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Good evening. I just have a couple of things for you. We have been working pretty consistently for the last month and a half on planning a community conversation. So we will be, on Wednesday, we'll be meeting at City Hall, where we'll be bringing in about 40 attendees, with half of those being representatives from local businesses, and talking about the opportunities to employ students with disabilities in our community. So Jerrilyn Rohr, who is our transition teacher slash coordinator, has been working really hard on the activities and things that we'll be needing on Wednesday. And also to highlight some of our transition program, there is an article listed in one of the Milwaukee newspapers starring, on the front page, one of our very own students. So I wanted to pass this around, and then it's kind of earmarked on page seven, just some additional pictures in there. Any questions? And if you guys, I know that you were invited for Wednesday, and if plans have changed and you're able to join us, please, please stop in.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Good evening. This month in, at Lake Mills Elementary School, we are participating in a Healthy School Challenge. It's sponsored by the Children's Hospitals of Wisconsin in partnership with Kohl's Cares, and we kicked this event off on Friday at our assembly. Our first graders introduced this idea with book buzzes or book recommendations about gardening, and all of the books in our school library that they've read, and then were able to tell their friends within the gym what books they can check out to learn more about gardening. And then we learned about our own school garden and how all of the students in the school will be participating in that. Our third graders are starting, are ready with planting the seeds to grow into seedlings, and through that, we also have a cabbage competition happening, and this happens every year, that Bonnie Plants donates cabbages to all of our students. And last year, Jack Vogel was awarded the state championship to, for growing one of the largest cabbages that I know I've ever seen, and that was a huge honor for Jack and for our school. And that kicked off that competition again for our third graders to get all of our kids excited about gardening. So that's one way that we're going to celebrate healthy kids at our school. The other way is each week during the month of April, I will be giving our students a challenge. This week, the challenge is screen time, trying to limit and be mindful about how much screen time children are having, and then next week, we'll think about ways that, what can we do instead of screen time? So that's what we are up to at the elementary school. Just some upcoming dates, parent-teacher conferences were last week, then again tomorrow from 4 to 8. We have our kindergarten through second grade concert coming up on April 24th at 6:00, and then our school carnival hosted by our PTO is on Friday, April 27th at 6:00. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barr?
Good evening. I hope all of you have a chance to take a peek at our Facebook page where Kaitlyn Twesme has, there's some news reports on her. She just recently, well, she didn't just recently complete the crystal. She was in a crystal-growing competition through UW-Madison. She grew for that competition the most perfect crystal, and so her crystal was launched into space out of Florida and is now on, her experiment is now on the space station. So if you want more information, the launch was just a couple of weeks, or the beginning of April, April 3rd. So if you want more information on that, it's on our Facebook page. Our ELA team recently had a literacy night. They've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to make literacy at the core of the middle school, and so they decided to have a literacy night. They all got together and really promoted it in their classes to hopefully get 50 kids in to do some reading, reading with dogs, different things after school. And Friday night, I think they had 200 people and 50 cookies. So they'll play on better last night, but it was wonderful to see all those kids excited about literature. PBIS has also been working hard. April is Shower One Another with Kindness Month, and each day, there is a phrase that students use, anything for, I think today was, "How are you doing?", to "How can I help you?", to "Cómo estás?", was on there, so. And when they do that, they get, if they do it sincerely, they get a good ticket. And just so you know, we have community service, another community service day coming up in May, where we'll be doing, among many other things, helping the elementary with their garden. And we also have our spring fling coming up, where all grades are invited to join us after school for some music and some other activities. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vogel?
Good evening. Just a couple teacher training updates. Our teachers, in preparation for the Aspire testing on the 17th and 18th of April, this week, Wednesday, are going to have some Aspire training themselves to get ready for that. Our leadership team, the following Wednesday on, in two weeks, is going to do some training on an ACT method. It's called ACT Method Test Prep, and basically, it's a 20-week ACT kind of self-paced course, and we're looking to implement that next year for our juniors and sophomores. And I'll fill you, fill you guys in more as we, as we get closer to implementation of that, but it's a program that is aligned with career cruising that we use for our academic and career plannings, and it's something that our students will be able to do during advisory in the next several years, and we're gonna, so we're going to do a training on that in a couple of weeks. Just an update on the Mill, our student food bank, sponsored by the Interact Club. We've done a couple new things as far as having request forms in our information station, which allows the students who want to take advantage of that, not go down to the district office where the food is at, but just fill out the form, give it to Ms. Mashie, and they're able to pick up the food or other items in several days. And since we've done that, the huge increase in the number of students utilizing it. So we're looking to probably bring that, store some of the food and other items in the high school itself next, next fall. Special thanks to Mr. Herman at NHS for a successful blood drive last month, and along with Blaze's updates on all the things going on, we have our spring play coming up this week, this weekend, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday. Again, Aspire testing, portfolio exit interviews on the 20th. We also have prom, April 21st, and April 25th, we have Ms. Gillespie, our school psychologist, is taking a number of students to Jefferson County Connections Leadership Conference in Watertown. That's about it.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Brocker?
Well, it's that time of year. The business office is preparing for the 2018-19 school year by working on budget. We've been working with the Horton Group, who's our insurance consultant, on our employee benefits for next year, and some of that will come up later on the agenda. And then on a different note, we worked with our insurance company, EMC, who we have our liability property, workers' comp insurance through. We had a consultant from that company come last week and walked through all of our buildings with our principals and did a security assessment, and we're awaiting the report from her. But she, she did a very thorough job of walking through the buildings and making some observations on how we can make some changes to our building to make them more secure.
And she also visited the 4K sites?
Oh, that's true. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, Mrs. Strike?
All right. Attached to the agenda tonight, you'll, you will see the report from Ron Dayton about the exit interviews for staff members that did not return this year. Unfortunately, only five of the 22 employees that left us participated, so there's many cautions and disclaimers throughout the report about, you know, how, how much to assume based on those findings. But one theme that did come up, and we, I think, are very cognizant of this, but we can definitely improve, it talked about mentoring, training, evaluation, and personal support for staff members. And so we will definitely take that into consideration as we make our plans for next year and entering new staff and how we do that. And as an administrative team, we're really going to make a commitment to how we can better support personnel as they come in, and then also in terms of the support they need in their time with us. There were other comments about our special education programming, and we are definitely recommending additional staff in that area, which reflects and kind of dovetails with the reports from those people who exited. There are really good things, too. People appreciated our benefit package. That was mentioned several times, and they, of course, appreciated the facilities, but their number-one compliment was to their coworkers and the people that they work with in this organization. So I thought that was a really, a nice compliment, not to the administrators, but to the, actually, the people that they work with every day. So that was great to hear. We are concerned about the low participation rate in this, and so Ron Dayton and I are kind of brainstorming some things to see if we could increase the number of people who respond. And we talked about possibly doing it online. There are pros and cons to that, but if people have moved some distance and don't want to do the phone call and commit to that amount of time, you know, that might be a, something to consider. We talked about maybe simplifying the tool or some other incentives, like gift cards or something, for participating, because we do really want people's opinions. From Ben Dayton, we have the recreation report, and I just have to say, there's so much energy around the recreation department right now. It's all really exciting. The report is attached, but I want to highlight a few things because it is, this department really is offering a lot of things, and there's a lot of participation. In terms of youth athletics, the indoor sports have ended, and the outdoor sports are beginning. They had 53 girls participate in the metal league volleyball program. Ben talks in here about archery. We haven't really addressed that. We have archery program through recreation, and the kids, Jane Riedel is the coach and teacher, and he, they can, they go to competitions, and Ben was able to go one of those, and just saying how much fun kids have and how much, how much the students are improving. So it's time for spring soccer, believe it or not. I've seen some of those kids out in their, like, little winter coats and snow pants practicing, but there's already 197 students signed up for that elementary-level soccer, so we're hoping good weather for them soon. As we move into baseball and softball, the numbers are there. Softball, 41 girls are signed up. Little League has 65, and the Pony and Teenage Baseball has 20. In terms of adults, we're offering, they're offering a class on parenting with Love and Logic, and that's taught by Sarah Kirsch. She's a trainer in that area. For youth, we continue to offer, offer Engineering for Kids, Welcome to Spanish, and Anxious to Awesome. For older adults, they went to a concert at Jefferson, the Performing Arts Center, for St. Patrick's Day, and that was well-received, and that Amish trip is upcoming. The new brochures are out. I've had him include one in this, so you can see that there's enhancements, just even to the look of it, with kind of some of the enhancements that we have in the recreation department, using our new consultant and adding a staff member. And there are three summer trips coming up for our older adults. Adult athletics, football, or, excuse me, volleyball has started their spring season. There are 40 adults in that. Disc golf continues to be popular, but there weren't enough to start a league. Flashlight Easter egg hunt was a big hit. I know my junior optimist kids packed over 1,000 eggs, but they didn't get to touch the 50 top prizes. The top prize was a drone, and the second was a camera, and so over 60 middle school and high school kids participated in that. The department is launching a new registration. One of the things that we're responding to the community is it's hard to register with Blue Sombrero, so we're moving to our school. So there's information about participants in the book about how to do that. And this evening, they will be, we will be talking about the new summer school playground program, that wraparound program to summer school, and they're recommending a person to be the supervisor for that. And in the first two days of signup, they already have 35 students signed up to participate in that program, so we think that's going to be an exciting time. But that's a lot, that's a lot to report on in one month. I mean, there's a lot going on in recreation. But the one thing that he didn't mention that I wanted to mention is, we did meet, Ben, our consultant, call it consultant, Bridget Hermanson and I, met with parents who want to look at the recreation basketball program and talk about kind of the recreation, recreation philosophy of everyone participates, while other people would like select teams. And so we're working with ways to kind of dovetail and bring that together, and we started with a very large community meeting just before spring break, and on Friday, we'll be having a meeting to process all of that information. Turning to the election results, as most people probably know right now, Rachel Davies and Dave Radell will be on the board beginning in, at our next meeting, which is April 23rd. We'll have a reorganizational meeting. And I wanted to confirm, did we say 6:00 for that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, 6:00 on April 23rd. We will swear in the new board members and talk about reorganizing. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Moving on to action items. Approval of March 12th Regular Board of Education meeting, approval of March 12th Finance Committee meeting, and approval of March 16th Facilities Committee meeting. Let's take those three together. I want to make a poll.
I move, I move the board approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting, the March 12th, 2018 Finance Committee meeting, and the March 16th, 2018 Facilities Committee meeting. Second.
Excellent. Any questions or comments on those in the meeting minutes?
I think I saw that on the 12th meetings, the correspondence was noted.
Was not, or?
Noticed in the minutes.
Was not noted?
Not noted.
Okay.
You can check me, but that's what I thought.
So can we make a correction on that if there? Okay, so we will vote on those. Ben and Que, have a roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval vouchers and invoices, and we could take the treasurer's report with that, too.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,675,747.31 for the month of March 28th. of March 28th, and the treasurer's report for the month of 2018.
Excellent.
Second.
Moving to second, approve the treasurer's report and the vouchers and invoices. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of insurance program for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
As you heard during the finance committee, we have really wonderful news that our insurance rate of increase was only 3.5 percent. We heard tonight that industry standards are between seven and nine, and we even heard about a school district who is at forty percent. So we are very pleased with our 3.5 percent increase with Dean, and through some negotiations, we were able to get our dental plan at a zero percent increase. So there'll be no change in any benefits and just have those slight increases.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the Dean medical insurance plans and Delta Dental Plans for the 2018-19 school year.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Abstain.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes with three ayes and one abstention. Approval of CISA II contract for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
In your packet, you'll see there's seven different contract pieces that all combine for our CISA II contract. Many of those services are related to low-incidence special education services, vision, deaf and hard-of-hearing, orientation mobility, as well as our Jedi contract is embedded in there as well.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the CISA II contracts for the 2018-19 school year as presented.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the contracts of CISA II. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 4K rental agreement with Lake Mills United Methodist Church for the seventeen-eighteen school year.
As you know, we have two separate contracts that go out, so the one that we're talking about tonight is at the Methodist Church. It represents just a 2 percent increase in the fees. At this time, we're not prepared to do the one at Kohl's Corner Campus. We're responding to numbers and requests for placement, but we do know that we will need to do that Methodist Church site.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the 4K program agreement with the Lake Mills United Methodist Church for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Moving to second, approve the 4K agreement with the Methodist Church. Questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contract for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
So we have the math position that I mentioned earlier to Mr. Krogan. He was a student teacher here in the fall, and he really, really connected well with the staff and students, and after a pretty extensive interview process, he was, is the recommended candidate.
I move a board, I move the board approve the professional staff contract to Mr. Alex Krogan as high school math teacher for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the professional staff contract. Questions? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of summer school contracts already.
You see a list attached, a pretty expansive list of our summer school staff, but it's not even complete. This is the first round. You'll hear more updates as, as we respond to the enrollment, but we'd like to get this first set of letters assignment out.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the summer school staffing for the summer of 2018.
Second.
Moving to second, approve summer school staffing. Questions on that? None? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff letters of assignment.
You'll see that we were able to fill three special education para educator positions this month, and also the summer school playground program supervisor position.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following letters of assignment to Ms. Jessica Laws as elementary school special education para educator, Ms. Elizabeth Dre as middle school special education para educator, Ms. Tammy Brigham as middle school special education para educator, and Ms. Alexa Resh as summer playground program supervisor.
Second.
Moving to second and approve staff letters of assignment. Questions on that? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment.
And these are both related to middle school track, which has already started as well.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following co-curricular letters, letters of assignment to Ms. Tammy Lambert as middle school track coach and Mr. Sean Balag as middle school track coach.
Second.
Moving to second and approve co-curricular letters of assignment. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of a gift.
We have one gift this month for the elementary school backpack program.
Motion, please.
I move the board accept the following donation and thank the donor for their generous support of our students, three hundred dollars to the elementary school's backpack program from the Lake Mills Moravian Church.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the gift. Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Future board agenda items.
As I mentioned, April 23rd, we'll have our reorganization meeting. At that time, we do have a coaching resignation to address, and we will continue our discussion about 4K programming. In May, we'll have a recap of the transition program, especially after this community meeting this week. We already are looking at the trip to France in 2019. Administrators will have some of the handbook materials ready for you. We'll look at co-curricular contracts, professional contracts, letters of assignment for support staff, and also have dues and fees for families ready for you to, for your approval.
Anything else you can think of? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned.